Go ahead. You weren't here yesterday. You were mic deprived for a day, so we noticed. We got something to say.
Okay, perfect. I live the closest, so they can come talk to me.
About the shooting thing, are you gonna do that one? The gravel pit, the bar? Lord, we just want to say thank you this morning that your mercies are new. Thank you for this amazing, beautiful place that we live. We invite your presence here today. Thank you, God, that you are a God who is outside of time. You're not limited. You see everything. And so we just say, God, we need your wisdom. We need your strength. We need your might. Everything that you have for Bonner County, we ask your will to be done, and we ask for your kingdom to come. Thank you that you love this place, that you have plans and desires for this place, and we just pray that you bring everything into the alignment for the plans that you have. And we just speak peace today, and we pray for your wisdom, your might, and that your solutions in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, if you please follow in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Commissioner Corn is on line. Commissioner Corn, are you going to do a commissioner update?
No, I'm not going to be able to do that.
Okay, so we are going to have to amend our agenda. Can we amend it to remove your item two then?
Nope. Refresh my memory real quick. What agenda item was that?
Your agenda item? If you're not going to give a commissioner update, we'll just remove that from our order.
Yes, the District Three update can be moved from the order.
All right. So at this time, we will entertain a motion regarding the order of our agenda.
Based on the information before us, I move to amend the order of the agenda by removing the B O C C action item discussion decision regarding prosecutor's office pay scale adjustment and the District Three Commissioner report.
There's a motion. There's a motion in a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes.
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 Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding our consent agenda.
Do we, I think we need to adopt the
Oh, that's right. We need to adopt the order of agenda as amended.
Based on the information before us, I move to adopt the order of the agenda as amended.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. On our consent agenda, items, big ticket items, fairgrounds, $6,000 for ADA seating and fence improvements, auditing, setup of professional services through ClearGov at $7,650. At this time, we will entertain a motion regarding our consent agenda unless the board has questions.
Actually, just a quick point of order. Commissioner Corn, since you're on Zoom, would you like me to make the motions?
I will, I'm pulling off, I was driving, I'm pulling off the side of the road, so I should be able to help you out with that.
Okay, whatever's easier for you.
All right, thank you.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
After this one.
Okay. No problem. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any comment from the public on the consent agenda? Seeing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And then I guess another point of clarification. Commissioner Corn, can we use your stamp?
Yes, you may.
All right. Next up is Clerk Rossville.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. Before you, I have Claims Batch Number 43 totaling $395,328.56. Doug, the big claims there, we have Road and Bridge taking up 262,000 of that, 152 in dust abatement, and about 90,000 in B S T surfacing oil. We also have 31,000 in solid waste contracted labor. And then the last big item is emergency management grant spend of 26,000.
Does the board have any questions for the clerk regarding the Claims Batch? Commissioner Corn?
None.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding F Y 25 Claims Batch 43.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of fiscal year 25 claims in batch number 43 totaling $395,328.56.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Comment from the public on this Claims Batch. Mr. Martin?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident for the record. Just a moment trying to silence. The emergency management, is there any specification as to where that money is going?
Bob Howard's not here, so I don't know exactly where he's spending that grant money.
All right, thank you.
All right, Doug Patterson.
Doug Patterson, for the record, Bonner County resident still. Thanks for reading my mind, Mike.
Always. It's a habit now. We miss seeing you here in person, though.
Careful what you wish for.
All right. Any further public comment on the Claims Batch? Seeing none further deliberation by the board. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Next item, Parks and Waterways.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Matt Zoller, Director, Parks and Waterways, for the record. Bonner County Parks and Waterways Department would like acceptance of a grant awarded from the state of Idaho for replace in-kind project of Priest Lake Navigation Lights and Granite Creek Dock. This will increase safety for Lake Pond and Preyslake users. This will make $57,232.50 of state money available for facility repairs with a low match cost of only $3,017.50. Match is currently available and earmarked in both line items, 038-7540 Dock Repairs and 038-7530 Facility Repairs. And this has been approved by auditing, legal, and risk.
Thank you for clarifying that, because that was going to be my only question. All right. Does the board have any questions for Matt on this item? All right, great job on grants researching for the county. At this time, we'll entertain, or Commissioner?
Corn.
No, Donkey, you were gonna say something to you.
No, I was sorry. I was just agreeing. This is great to see. Thank you, Matt.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move the county to accept and fund the grant awarded to Bonner County Parks and Waterways for the O R F A C grant to better Bonner County waterways.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next up, Director Topp.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Topp, Bonner County Road and Bridge Director, for the record. So what I have for you today is just cleaning up a job description. So our Road and Bridge Technician, Right-Away Bridge Repair Coordinator, has a three and a four written in there. There is only one job description, which is a three. Sounds like about four years ago. When they moved that position to a grade nine rather than just moving the position, they created a number, a number four, which they should now. So I went through and I cleaned it up. To take those numbers out means there is no one and two, as Commissioner Corn pointed out when we were talking about this in an earlier discussion. So Road and Bridge has requested approval of the update and revised the Road and Bridge Technician three. We should say four is well on there, because there is no four. Right-Away Bridge Repair Coordinator job description to clean up the verbiage and the job description title to create less confusion and add additional responsibilities to align with the current needs and functions of the department. This position is a grade nine, as budgeted for, so please see both the redlined version and the newly corrected version that is attached for your reference.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Director Topp on the change in the job description? Seeing none at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the revised job description for the Road and Bridge Technician, Right-Away and Bridge Repair Coordinator.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Hearing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. All right. Next item is our Dave Shook Airport.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. Dave Shook, Airport's manager for Bonner County. What we have before you is a grant offer from the FAA's Airport Improvement Program. This grant offer is in response to a grant application approved and submitted earlier this year. This project consists of removing obstructions at both ends of the runway at Sandpoint Airport. Grant is in the amount of $432,749. There is a 5% grant match required amounting to $21,637. This has been approved by auditing, risk, and legal, and I recommend accepting this grant.
Okay. All right. Does the board have any questions on this item?
Yes, Director Shook, as I indicated at our last business meeting, this will become a consistent question for me. So I'd like to confirm if there's been verification with the auditors and clerk's office as regarding cash flow for making our grant matches.
There is. This work won't actually start for two reasons. This won't actually, work won't actually start until end of September, early October. The grant will be, assuming you accept the grant, the grant will be available, and we will actually be able to request reimbursement probably without any cash flow requirement for us in terms of the way the invoices will come in from the contractor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Based on the information before us, I move to accept this grant in the amount of $432,749 and that the chair signed administratively.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Our next item up is revising the Inland Power and Light Cooperative Residential Battery Storage Pilot Program for Blan- Blanchard. I'm gonna clarify and say the hoodoo area.
So I brought this back on the agenda after Commissioner Williams brought it forward at the last business meeting. There were some questions that were raised by the community and by the board that I thought would be appropriate for us to ask Inland Power and Light Cooperative to see if we could get answers. The four questions that I asked were all answered, and so I'll read those questions and answers so that the board can see the information that was received by the Commissioners. The first question that I asked was, where would the battery bank or banks be located? And how would power be distributed to the homeowners that are selected to participate in this pilot? The answer is that this will be partially determined through the public process. The most cost-effective location would be within the member's garage or shop, and that they're currently anticipating that they would not have ownership or view into anything past the meter. This means that the member would own the battery and would have full control over how it's configured and how long it can power each device in the home. This approach would limit the service provider to the ability to turn off the meter in the same manner as they currently have now, except now they have the ability to, they would also have the ability for the comfort of the home to be powered through an event. In other parts of the country, the utility can draw from the battery bank during an event, which can make the battery more cost-effective. Public comment will determine if the member has interest in anything more sophisticated than just a backup power source to the home. The other question was, are fire protection and containment plans in place should the battery banks catch fire? The answer is, fire protection and containment plans are discussed with the installer. I will send a separate email to our installer partner, Northwest Renewables. Northwest Renewables will also be on site for our public engagement meetings to answer questions of the members that they have. That gentleman from Northwest Renewables did respond and provide documentation on the batteries that are proposed to be used and the different safety protocols for dealing with monitoring and safety of hazards with the batteries. So the third question was, would participants in the program have backup power, who have backup power generators connected to their home, to their power distribution system, still be able to use their backup generators? The answer is, this will partly be driven by public input. There is a cost associated with configuration to a backup generator. So we are soliciting feedback on if the value is worth the cost. And so I think they may have slightly misunderstood the reason for my question, but in essence, my understanding is they're indicating that it's simply a cost of how you want to configure, how the power is going to be distributed for the multiple types of secondary or backup power. What I wanted to be sure about was that there wouldn't be some control or disability for folks to have a generator in addition to having a backup battery. And so their answer to question number one, saying that their access to the system would stop at the meter, would actually answer that question anyway. And then question number four that I asked was, where are the components such as the batteries intended to be sourced from? And the answer is that the battery technologies we're currently considering are Enphase, which is manufactured in Texas. And then they provided the safety data sheet and information regarding those batteries and battery systems from Enphase. And that does indicate that it's a U.S. manufacturer and that they're manufactured in Texas. So with a better understanding of what the intent of the pilot program is, even though some of the details will still have to be worked through the development of the program, I am now personally comfortable with the support letter that was drafted and proposed, given that additional information that's been provided.
Commissioner Corn, did you need any further clarification on this item?
No, I appreciate that. One of the main concerns that I had too, that Commissioner Donkey addressed, was the fact that homeowners are still going to be able to use backup generators or other ways of powering their house in case of a power outage. So I'm glad that got addressed.
Okay. At this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding the item. I would like to ask that when we make the motion, that we don't say for Blanchard, because that's not how their, theirs is for, it doesn't give specific to the location, because it's actually not, I want to say theirs was hoodoo. And the way they call it, the way they reference it is just the inland power residential, cooperative residential battery pilot program.
Copy that.
Yeah, I agree, because it's, it's, I mean, really, it's gonna, it's based more on an area based on a substation with the power distribution, and that's not specific to only Blanchard.
Yes, and that theirs is actually, it's in hoodoo, at their hoodoo location. I don't want to, so just for clarification, if people are watching that didn't hear this last time, it's not a, this is a grant that Inland Power already received. They're not asking for the county to kind of co-sign to help them get the money. They actually already have the money. They already have the project moving forward. It's just now that they've received the money that they're asking for support from the county. And when this got presented the first time, one of the comments I made about, I had made a comment in other meetings that I didn't think it was the county's job to help companies achieve grant funding. But once they get their funding, I think it's reasonable to give that support of what they're doing in our community. And if this turns out to be something that's beneficial to the community, then it might be something that other energy companies might want to look into. But in this case, the letter that they sent us is just, it's a posthumous support of what they are already doing. So with that, we'll entertain a motion on this item.
Commissioner Corn, sorry, go ahead.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the letter of support for inland power and light cooperative residential battery storage pilot program.
Seconded.
There's a motion in a second. Comment from the public on this item. Mr. Martin?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, for the record. I did not hear a date, because I believe Commissioner Donkey said that there were going to be public comment periods, and I did not hear that, and I don't know if that is or has been determined yet.
I'll give you the dates, I'll, I can give you the dates of that when I do my commissioner update. He's just trying to get it, this part passed. But I do have the dates for the discussions that'll occur.
And question number two, or comment number two, is dealing with the batteries and just making sure that the Commissioners are aware and the public is aware that in case of a thermal runaway, and if that battery system is inside the home garage or basement or wherever, that any off-gassing that takes place ends up becoming a hazardous waste area and that if the fire was put out rapidly, there would still be a cost of cleaning up the site where any smoke and/or material gases and all have gone to. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, I think you raise a good concern, and as we move towards things like this, it might be worth doing a collaboration with FIRE and how to be prepared for something like that when we're talking about putting things in homes to help our community be prepared for something like that.
Yeah, and I'll say, I agree that that's good information, and it's worthy of continued community awareness and outreach, because there are many, many people who either have or are intending to install such systems on their own in their homes, whether they're already off-grid or whether they just want backup. So this is going to become more prevalent throughout our community, and so improving awareness will definitely be a benefit.
Thank you very much.
Any further public comment on this item? All right, deliberation by the board. Hearing none, roll call vote. Corn.
I would just like to apologize to Commissioner Donkey for taking his turn.
Apology accepted. No concerns.
He'll give you some work off of his plate. Roll call vote. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, planning hours.
Okay, so, consistent with Bonner County Revised Code 1-100, the Board of County Commissioners has previously discussed in an open meeting the intent for all county offices and departments to be open at a minimum from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on weekdays, except holidays, for the transactional public business. Bonner County Revised Code 1-100 also allows for a department to establish differing business hours upon the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. A prior Board of County Commissioners approved the planning department's hours of operation to differ from those stated in Bonner County Revised Code 1-100. In order for the Bonner County Board of Commissioners to realign the planning department's hours of operation to be from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on weekdays, except holidays, is the recommendation of legal counsel that the Board of County Commissioners should make this decision via a vote as an agendized item. That is the reason that I'm bringing this forward today, so that we can formalize this administrative discussion and decision.
So I, do, do you want to just have questions asked of you before we do a motion?
Sure.
So I think this is a good idea. This is something the public have actually brought forward that the hours not being Monday through Friday, nine to five, impact their ability to conduct business. I wanted to ask, was there, with the schedule of nine to five, are they going to do flex days where some people are there and not there? And the reason I ask that is they have some people that, for example, they have just one person that does their floodplain. And so is there, are we going to see a flex schedule, or is it going to be, the business can be conducted during those hours, and they'll flex to ensure that business is able to be conducted Monday through Friday? Because I wasn't sure on the flex.
Yeah, so there will be flex and/or differing hours depending on staff to create that level of coverage. Part of, part of that is also because some of the staff, of course, are involved with hearings that happen after normal business hours for the planning and zoning commissions. But what are, what I would consider to be normal types of business that are being transacted will be covered from that 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. There may be some specialty types of items like a floodplain that are not something that we have a lot of walk-in customers for, that that would just need to be scheduled by appointment. And so there are, I can't think of any other example at the moment, but there are instances when you wouldn't walk in and just immediately have a conversation with a planner on a specific topic if it requires more research or detailed consideration. And so they would usually plan that by scheduling it in advance, so they can go and do the research and then bring the information to the conversation to have that meeting. So for the public's benefit, that's a good question. If somebody has something other than a typical walk-in with an application or have a general question, if there's something that's going to be more detailed, more specific and unique, it would always be my suggestion to call ahead and confirm whether or not the person that you need to speak with is going to be available and to schedule an appointment, because that way you're, nobody, you know, there's always the possibility that that person is already off that day for some other reason or otherwise engaged, so it's always prudent to make an appointment. If it's not a typical pick up an application, drop off an application type of drop-off-an-application type of item.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Corn, do you have any thing to ask before we entertain a motion on this item?
Yeah. So it sounds like if the public comes in on a Friday to apply for a building location permit or needing help with that, that that will be covered?
Yes, that is the intent. Full coverage, if I can say the word, of normal items, that they would typically come to the front lobby of the planning department for. And so there may just be, you know, less number of people performing those duties per day, but all of those duties should be covered on any given day of the business week.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Corn?
Oh, back to me.
Well, it's his agenda. He presented the agenda item.
Gotcha. Okay. Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County establish that the minimum hours of operation for the planning department be from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on weekdays, except holidays, for the transaction of public business.
All right, there's a motion. There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing no public comment, deliberation by the board.
I'll just say that the language that is proposed in the motion now would create alignment with the standard language of Bonner County Revised Code 1-100.
I think that this is a good reflection that this board is taking into consideration what the public identifies as what it... This has been a constant comment about public service being open for the public, so I think this is a really good move. All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Corn?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, and we'll move on to Commissioner One update.
All right. So I'm going to start off my thanks to...
Did we miss something on the agenda? Or did I?
That was the B.O.C.C., the third item on the B.O.C.C. that was removed.
Gotcha, thank you.
Since that was addressed during the budget meeting yesterday.
All right, I appreciate that. I'm going to... I got to get back on the roads so I can get back in for those exec sessions.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner Domke.
So for the District One update, I want to let folks know my thanks to Roden Bridge for the help. I have been contacted by a member of the community. There is a piece of property on DuFert Road near Willow Bay, and that piece of county property, there's been some issue with some folks going on there and using that as a shooting range. And when doing so, they're actually firing into private property to use as a backstop, and that's created an unsafe condition. And so the county's gone ahead, and we've signed that property as no trespassing, and there's signs going up that there's, you know, no shooting to help make it clear. I want the community to understand that this is not... It's not the adjacent property owner who's putting the signs up and indicating this. This is the county making this decision. It's, again, it's not a safe and appropriate use for that piece of property. So I just want folks to understand that. So I appreciate them referencing and complying with the signage. If anybody has any questions, they're happy to contact me about that. We can have a conversation. Also, just wanted to mention that yesterday was a dedication ceremony for the Safe Haven baby box that was installed across the way, and that is now operational and ready to be used to allow a mother to turn over her baby in a safe and anonymous way. So just want folks to be aware in the community that that is now in place. Also, want to mention the Lightning Creek fire, my thanks to the first responders who were fighting this wildfire and all the other wildfires that have occurred in our community this season. I know that one has been more challenging, and there's additional information that hopefully we're going to have over the next few days, as they're bringing in a higher level of incident command to help with that particular situation. An update on the cell tower and broadband ordinance discussion. We are continuing to work with legal on bringing forward a proposed resolution to contract for a legal service that can help us draft a revision to our associated ordinances. We're trying to schedule a meeting with the board to interview a potential attorney for those services, and so hopefully that's something that we're going to be able to get through in the next week to help toward making a decision. Also, wanted to mention, appreciate, again, the Roden Bridges jumping on this, but there was that temporary road blockage out on 200 and Culver and Culver last week due to an accident where a... Actually, a girder for the Rapid Lightning Bridge Number Five that was on a long bed turned over and blocked the highway. And because there was damage to that girder, Roden Bridge Director, Top, had made sure that that is getting to be properly inspected and determine whether or not it's in a safe and viable condition before it becomes permanently installed on the bridge, or whether it needs to be replaced. And so there may be some delays associated with that project because of that unfortunate and unforeseen situation, but just want members of the public to understand that if there are delays, it's because we're making sure that the final condition is going to be safe and effective long-term. So we hope... Appreciate everybody's understanding if we end up with a little bit of a delay there. Also, update on the comprehensive plan and land use component and associated map. For those who aren't aware, the board did hold a workshop last week on that, and we are scheduling additional workshops to provide sufficient time to conduct a thorough review of the public comment, as well as the proposed changes, before we make a formal and final decision on what to adopt for changes to the comp plan on the land use component in the map. Please understand that these are pretty complex issues, and the current proposal that the planning department has brought forward was developed over a number of years. I'm sorry, not the planning department, but the planning commission. So their efforts spanned a number of years and a lot of time and questions being asked and considered to come up with that proposal. And so the Board of County Commissioners needs an appropriate amount of time to work through all the implications that are being proposed, to be sure that we're confident that the final solution is one that we can support and makes sense. So it's not to question the planning commission, it's to say that they've had the opportunity to think through this in detail, and we need the same opportunity now before we reach our decision. So please be patient. I'm also working with a member of the Fair Board on, as I mentioned last week, on the fairgrounds' main parking lot, started to do some research with the city to understand what type of long-term drainage improvements we might have as an option to really make that more viable for its long-term use and maintenance. And so that process is just starting, and the city's being very helpful with providing me with what information they have about the storm sewer system out there. So my thanks to the City of Sandpoint for that, and there'll be continued updates as I'm able to make more progress on that. And then finally, I wanted to mention, with regard to the Panhandle Bike Ranch, in addition to continuing to receive a lot of public comment in general about the upcoming hearing, the county is also aware of the new alleged violations at the Panhandle Bike Ranch with regard to operations. We are engaged in an active investigation, so we're not allowed to release any details about that investigation at this time, but please be aware that we are actively working on this item, and we are fully aware of the concerns that have been raised. So just be aware that the county's taking action to pursue this through our normal process, so I do ask for patience as we work through that issue, but we are aware. Does anybody have any questions about any of my update items?
You're not... You're sure you're not sure?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You want to come up in?
No. Go ahead.
Mike Rosedale, Bonner County. Is the shooting range thing, is it about mile three across from Irish Road? Is that about... Is that where you're talking?
So about a mile... It's about a mile west of the intersection of DuFert and Vay. It's a tall, exposed embankment of gravel, and that embankment is privately owned.
There are lots of such properties.
There are a lot like that in the area, yes. There's a lot of similar geology, so look for the signs and you'll know the best location. Yes, ma'am?
Actually, my question was about the comprehensive plan.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Frida King, and I'm currently a resident of Dover, but I need to have some answers about a proposed settlement agreement with the City of Dover to get back into the county and how that affects me with your comprehensive plan that you're... And I don't know where to go, because the planner told me to come over here and ask where I go and how I get this resolved.
May I ask, ma'am, are you referring to the area of impact for the City of Dover?
No, we actually are suing the City of Dover to get back into the county, and the settlement agreement isn't conducive to at least six of us. And also, I don't... I believe that it won't be conducive to the zoning as far as the county's concerned, so I need to review the settlement agreement with somebody that can give me some answers as to whether to agree or disagree.
So first, I have to say that... So that's not something that the Board of County Commissioners can address with you, but afterwards, we can have a conversation, but that's not what Commissioner Corn was report... Or, sorry, Domke was reporting out on.
Is it comprehensive plan?
No, you have an actual specific legal case, so I'm aware of what happened out in Dover, but that's not a county thing. The case between Dover and wanting to get into the county is not the county.
But it will... When we're in the county, it will affect us directly if this...
It will, but you have open litigation.
I understand that, but I just wanted to understand what's going to happen to me once I get in the county to make a decision whether I want to stay in Dover or whether I want to go into the county.
Okay.
So I need to discuss that with somebody, and I don't know where to go.
Okay. So after our meeting, we can have a little bit bigger conversation to see where we can point you to.
All right, great. Okay, so...
Hold tight.
Do I come back or...
You can just stay here. We'll be done in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Commissioner Domke about his report? All right. Okay, with that, we'll go to Commissioner Two report. So first is the discussion on the inland power. So they are actually agreeable to do in a Commissioner chat, and it looks like it might be on the 19th of August, so I'm going to wait for her to confirm that date. That's the date that she gave me. So Wayne, do you have your pen ready? I'm going to give you the two dates of the scheduled public comments. It's going to be August 20th from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. That's at the Blanchard Area Community Center, so that's off of the Rushell Lane. The second one is August 25th, and that's 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. And so that is at the same location at the Blanchard Community Center. You can also email them at conservation@inlandpower.com if you have specific questions and you don't think that you're going to be able to make either of those discussions. But I will also post that up on Facebook, so people can have that information, as well as a phone number that you can dial to also ask questions about this particular project. But hopefully, we can get a Commissioner chat in, and that'll allow kind of an open dialogue and more visibility of that particular project. So I have received quite a bit of correspondence from members of the community, so I'm going to first just kind of go through our dates and then address some of the things received. On August 26th, it's going to be the Commissioner chat with the state comptroller, and so I did receive a lot of information from members of the public who had specifics that they wanted to look at. Thank you to Maureen and Doug Patterson, who sent me a couple of pages of questions. I did send that over to Mr. Wolf in preparation for our Commissioner chat. It is, he's going to be on Zoom, so he's not going to be physically present. It is only 45 minutes, so I did kind of do a little pushback on some of the other counties that wanted an opportunity to ask him questions of... I'm gearing this towards Bonner County, so Bonner County questions are what the focus is going to be. From the information that I got, when we're going through the examples of Transparency Idaho and Idaho Town Hall, as he does examples, there's a request that he use the schools as a way to kind of navigate that system, because there's a lot of questions on schools and how funding happens and where you can go to find that information, as well as how do we see procurement on that particular site. Forty-five minutes is not a long time for the number of questions that I already received from people on this particular topic. So the only request I'm going to be very stringent on is not long-running questions where you hold the mic and then no one else gets to ask him any questions. He's excited to participate with it, so thank you to him for making that time to do that. So on the 30th of August, I will not be in town, but I did receive from our former representative, Sage Dixon, there's an adventure history and connection at Farragut State Park on the 30th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The purpose of this is to join Idaho's foster kinship and adoptive families for a free, family-friendly event as part of the 2025 Idaho State Parks Foster Family Passport Program. It's an opportunity to explore the natural beauty and history of Farragut State Park while showing support for Idaho families. The activities that are going to include are museum tours, guided nature hikes, fishing for beginners, native fish trailer, cultural heritage activities, and more. This is, again, it's an awesome opportunity. There's an opportunity to RSVP. I'll also put the flyer that he sent me online, and so that the community can see this. One of the focuses of Mr. Dixon, he works for the State of Idaho now with a focus on faith-based treatment. I have reached out to him over a focus on, in terms of mental health, that's one of the things a lot of people in North Idaho have identified as a lack of faith-based mental health providers. So I did also reach out to him on, let's have that conversation. So that's the kind of what we've got going on in the month of August. I received a couple of letters asking that Bonner County Board of Commissioners review decisions that are being made through the planning department. And so I'm not going to go through all of the details that are listed in some of the emails that have been received, but essentially, what people are doing is they're identifying various decisions that have been made and asking that Bonner County take a look at the implications of some of the decisions. And so I'm going to take the time to go through each of these with our legal counsel to be able to give an answer to the community, because it's more than one person that have asked us to take a look at various decisions and how things are happening in the planning department. That doesn't mean there's something wrong, it just means there's a request for review, and we're going to take that request seriously. I received comments from members of the public, as well as other elected officials regarding cash processes at the fair. So I want to kind of lead by saying, it's reasonable for people to ask a question, so it doesn't mean something wrong is happening. And it gives us an opportunity to give information to the public of what is happening in a positive direction. So I received some feedback regarding the beer garden. One of the things that was noted was some people felt like there wasn't seating available at the beer garden. People wanted to sit instead of stand and watch the rodeo. That feedback was given to the fair. There was an episode where they were not able to use card readers due to internet, so people did ask questions about the security of cash handling. That was also something that was brought up in the external audit of making sure we have good practices of managing cash, having a second person available. So thank you to members of the community that brought those issues and concerns forward that has been brought and raised to the attention of the fair manager. He has already started giving some answers, but they did have a process in place. One of the things that I noted was, there was an opportunity for them to ask for some tech support from the county when it related to having difficulty with that internet connection. And so some of this is an opportunity of understanding is, when something comes up, how do we get assistance in real time? And so we did give that resource there. It's not... We want to encourage people to give their input, because when we can give an answer that shows we're doing the right thing, it helps build confidence in the proceedings that are happening there. So thank you to everybody that sent me a message and to the other electeds that brought it to my attention, that people were having some concerns regarding that. Mr. Bowman requested a review of kind of some process, and I said, it's not going to be completed, but I would start by asking the questions regarding compliance. And so the response that I got from Director Gabel regarding compliance and the process was, he... That's a process that he has copied over to the compliance officer, Katie Hansen. And so the compilation of information is that the public complaint process starts with, once they are received, they're entered into a system and assigned to a compliance investigator. The investigator reviews the applicable Bonner County Revised Code, as well as any related approvals, i.e. conditional use permits, variances, building and location permits. Site's visits are scheduled as needed to gather evidence to either substantiate or dismiss the allegation or the alleged violation. If a violation is found, the first step is a courtesy letter, giving the property owner an opportunity to voluntarily correct the violation. If there's no response to the resolution, a stop-work order... If there's no response to the resolution, a stop work order or certified letter may be issued depending on the severity of the violation. If the property owner still does not respond, a notice of, notice titled to record the property or recorded on the property, this notice is not a lien, but informs future buyers and lenders of unresolved code issues. So part of what this is exposing is we need to kind of do some work on this process because in part, one of the things community members are asking is where do they know the, the response is in the complaint process? And there are some elements of this that allow for interpretation of the department. So we're starting that process. Excuse me. So with that, are there any questions? No?
No public comment.
All right, public comment. I exhausted my voice, so Fred Aron.
Fred Aron's still a Bonner County resident. I, I just want to say again that I, as our court issues begin to gain momentum and all, I think there's probably information that's going to come out that people are really going to question what happened in the past and some of the behavior in the past. And then I, I think the next logical course of those questions is, is what are we going to do to mitigate some of the illegal unlawful behavior that happened in the past for the future? And I would like to once again suggest that being proactive is much better than being reactive. And I, I would suspect that the homestead thing is not the only issue that people are going to question. So I don't think it hurts to go back and look at some of the previous board's decisions and make sure that they were done legally and lawfully. And if they weren't, then perhaps we should come up with a way to correct that.
In part, a number of people have listed essentially what you're saying that they want reviewed and that has to be reviewed by the board as a request for review, but not addressing open current litigation.
No, I, current litigation is, I'm referring to potential litigation.
No worries. Next, Michelle, did you change your mind? No, you went up to the top. Michelle Johnson.
Good morning. I'm Michelle Johnson, Bonner County resident. I just wanted to make a comment in regards to the compliance. Thank you for bringing that up and reviewing what Jake said the format is. And my concern, and maybe there can be some future improvements, compliance does not work on the weekends and many complaints from various businesses are happening on the weekend. So how can complaints be validated if the Planning Department, compliance does not even work during those hours to be able to go and do onsite visits? That's just my, that is one of my concerns.
I think that's a valid point and that's something that we need to include in a review of how do we confirm compliance as it pertains to. And I think some of the comments that I've received are businesses that are operating and questioning the, some people are questioning the light versus heavy use and the operations occur on a weekend versus a weekday. So I think that that's a valid question and I'll add that to the review of that process.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Is that, Brent is your hand up? There's another hand up. Can you see the hand? It's up in the bar.
Christine.
Christine? There you go, Christine S. 25. Oh, no, that's actually your phone. That's actually Christine Logue. I know that number. Christine, unmute yourself.
Did I unmute myself?
How do I know her phone? Yes, you do.
Yeah, I don't know. Christine Logue, Bonner County resident. I just want to say thank you to all three commissioners for their professionalism and their effort in making sure that our county is informed of the different, of the different projects that's going on, the different emergencies. I really feel better informed with this group of commissioners and I commend all three of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Before I close out, I have to comment on.
There are no other page, ma'am?
Mute yourself, Christine.
Sorry, I'm at work.
The Bonner Park West, I don't have an updated for a meeting for, on that particular group. They do do their meetings on Monday. One of the things that Bill Wilson is going to do is in preparation, it's going to be looking at what would the county's position be and sending that over to the board for kind of a review of if we were going to be agreeable to address kind of the development out there. So they're still moving forward. I have spoken with Mayor Connolly. There is a desire to kind of understand what the county's position would be, noting that the county's focus is ensuring public access to waterfront property. So that was something I wanted to mention. And it's open enrollment for Bonner County employees for healthcare. Please take the time to go downstairs and ask your very specific questions. Thank you to Kevin and HR and to Regency. We hit a bump yesterday, but we hit the ground running to fix it and it just shows the effort on all of our parts to ensure that we are doing what's right for both the public and for the employees of Bonner County. Some people have been asking questions about drugs. They are downstairs, giving you an opportunity to actually look up the specific drugs that you want them to look up.
Can we use the word prescription?
Well, prescription doesn't necessarily, prescription drugs. There'll be drugs that are not going to be on the formulary and it's up to you on how you buy those, so I'm not passing judgment. So Fred Aron is willing to run over to Washington and Sheriff Wheeler can follow him as he comes back into Idaho. How's that? So prescription drugs, that, that's a huge part is the drug lookup tool, prescription drug lookup tool. All right, it is, any further public comment? All right, 9:54 and this meeting is adjourned. All right, ma'am. Bring up what you have so we can point you in the right direction. And if we're not right.
I've got one for you too.
Want to sit here?
You go first.
She's, I don't think, I think I know what their issue is. Have a seat here. We can just do it now. All right. Okay.